The adoption of the agenda.
Be resolved at the special meeting of September 7, 2023, agenda be adopted as.
Or just the one, just. You got that.
I put Western Caucus on it for.
Okay, yeah, like the registration. Okay, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah. As. You you got that? Wasn't any, no, okay, that's your motion. Does anybody have any additions?
We said.
Yeah.
I'll say.
So. As to that, okay, all in favor?
Okay.
Okay, folks, um, I'll just give a bit of background there. Once a year, a council has to make organizational, has to review it. And back when we started off, right at the time, the existing CEO was all with COVID and he left, so we never really did it. Made appointments or anything, and it has to be done by resolution. And we had a temporary CEO that no, we weren't ready for it. So I just thought, I asked Jordan to, I think it's time to get some committees together like we did tonight. I think committees would really allow us to do more discussion like we did prior to this meeting to form our committees and just move forward like we did in the past. And I just look back at ours like we used to have them then, once the committees are formed, the chairperson can call them and the schedule came out, actually a year in advance. This was printed in 2021 for 2022. It's a good, so then we don't have to predict when the meetings will be. You put them on there and then you have them an hour before council. So normally the Reeve and the CEO sit down and make the commitments. Now, this is the all the committees that we had before, I added a few more and we can definitely after we pass this, we can, by no means, I think there's a few other ones that we need to think about adding after this. So there's, that was the reason I I put this forward. So I just thought I'd give everybody a bit of a heads up. Motion. Are you there?
So we will have to amend our organizational bylaw and things like that because that way, that was why it was kind of a committee item. Because right now your organizational bylaw only lays out for six committees, which is just all your departments. Whereas you'll see in the resolution, it's a lot more over and above that. So you have to include all of that in your organizational bylaw when we amend it. But that that one would you back today, you could create a committee anytime you want. It's just best practice to also make sure your organizational bylaw reflects all of these new committees, what their roles and and special duties in addition will be.
And I'll add to that, as you see, I got three, at the last one, we we all attended. Like, there's three on that committee, but I think at ninety nine percent of them, I think all council members showed up and they participated. It's just that that way each committee has a chairperson. That individual will will do the chairs anyway. Added a few, but I think it's important. Things are changing and so. I can have a motion, but because we have to do it once a year and we really haven't done it in the first year of office. So no more or.
You want to read it?
No, well, yeah. Yeah, very moving, yeah.
Okay, I'll do it.
Speak nice and loud and clear. Whereas bylaw number sixteen ninety oh three twenty twenty is the arm of Cornwallis's organizational bylaw to govern the organization and the committees thereof. Therefore, be it resolved, the following committee upon it be made for the real municipality of Cornwallis. Number one, Transportation Services Committee will be a committee of the whole with Councilor Maxwell as the chair. Number two is the Finance Audit Committee and a Capital Replacement Committee. Reeve Hofer, Counselor Brown, and Deputy Reeve Ross as the chair. Number three will be the Recycling and Waste Health and Safety Committee, Counselors Grohan and Maxwell, and Counselor Brown as the chair. Number four is Personnel Committee, Reeve Hofer, Deputy Reeve Ross, and Counselor Maxwell as the chair. Number five is the Utility Committee, Reeve Hofer, Counselor Grohan, and Deputy Reeve Ross as the chair. Number six, Protective Services Committee, Counselor Brown, Deputy Reeve Ross, and Counselor Grohan as the chair. Number seven is a Bylaw Committee, Committee of the Whole, Counselor Brown is the chair. Number eight is a Policy and Communication Committee, Reeve Hofer, Counselor Maxwell, and Deputy Reeve Ross as the chair. Number nine is an IT Security Committee, Counselors Grohan and Maxwell, Deputy Reeve Ross as the chair. And number ten is the Aggregate Committee, will be a committee of the whole with Counselor Grohan as the chair.
Can I have a second? Counsel Brown, second. Okay. Anybody have any questions? So we're discussing.
Looks like you put a lot of work into it. Thanks for your confidence.
Yeah, guys, I mean, as you can see, I didn't share any. I've got a big meeting and I'll try to participate with anyone. Like I said before, folks, at the end of the day, you're all, we're a team here. There's only three required, but I would encourage you to try to schedule a meeting so everybody can be here and you can participate. That's what we've done the last three or four years.
I have a question regarding the committees. Are there terms of reference that that we can can align ourselves with in order to to do that?
Yeah, I mean, for example, you take the IT Security Committee, right? I mean, is that what you're talking about?
Well, anything.
That's what I was referencing with the organizational bylaw, where our organizational bylaw, it lays out every single one because usually you review your organizational bylaw and then include your committees in it. So if you have a look at organizational bylaw, it'll state Legislative and Finance Committee, what their roles and responsibilities are. Utility Committee, what their roles and responsibilities. None of this exists. Um, and then even, you know, the names of some of these committees and all that stuff too. It's all kind of brand new.
Yeah. Like you take the Aggregate Committee, we learned a lot through the that public hearing we had, through the municipal board hearing. I mean, there was a lot of good things that came out of that, that, I mean, that can now extend. We did say we're going to get the community involved, but this is just for council to make the decisions. But yeah, I think there, we need to put references on to that one.
Is the CEO involved with all committee meetings?
Yeah, I mean, the previous CEO was always there, but not, doesn't have to be there, but they normally.
Normally would be.
Yeah, just to to take a minute there. Yeah. Like, some of these committees were the same or just added, like you take capital, we're starting to Finance Committee usually did that, but I just thought to clarify, like capital, like the grader replacement, buildings or lagoons and things like that, we can at least put a little bit of meat to it. Recycle, that's new. It used to be just Waste Health and Safety Committee, so I just added the recycle there. Because that's going to become a big issue or big topic. Yeah.
To take some of the to take some of the pressures off of Jordan of being on some of these committees that doesn't really have to be on. He can use his delegate authority and one of the girls could come in for something like that. Is that correct?
Well, I have to. To get you guys, but.
That's a good.
Like I told me during regular working hours.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's what I mean. We have plenty of hours, right?
Yeah.
That's actually a good point of it. If he feels he can delegate somebody.
And like finance, of course, he will, yeah, I mean, that's, that's good. I mean, that's, but I mean, some of the other ones, you know, he can report or she can.
You know, we can do some other staff or some red word. And I know, Jordan, you, back in April, May, when you first sent me the list, you had multiple other ones. I just thought we can do this one, get the ball rolling, then we can rely on that. You said you formed a bunch of them in Bifrost, like Parks and Recreation.
Well, yeah, like you guys simply didn't even know your committees when I was asking you. And then, you know, we had a guy stop showing up and they're saying, well, why aren't you guys appointing anybody?
Well, that couple months. Well, we waited for, until you're free, but I think it's time after five months, let at least get some committees going. No, but that actually, that's a good point. If Jordan feels like he can appoint somebody.
Well, I mean, some of them aren't, you know.
Yeah.
I don't want to.
Pretty much.
Don't have him at.
Okay, next. Now, this, we could we have to, we can only give you one reading, right?
No, this is just a resolution appointment. We're not changing the bylaws tonight.
Yeah, because.
Bylaw was going to get direction at the committee meeting, but instead we're just gonna.
Yeah, when I see bylaw.
Ten committees.
Okay. Anybody else? But in, is there any additions that any other committee?
So we can, so we can move this around on the organizational bylaws so that. Grounders.
Yeah, like the procedure usual, well, you haven't laid out what the special duties of the standing committees are. So each one of these is going to need a special standing committee, like you're a burden of attachment of the organizational bylaw. They list what the committee is and what their responsibilities are.
So then we have to add all those in there and adjust them.
And then we would read the bylaws and so on. But you guys can do committees at any time you want and.
But like I say, what I liked about, once the committees are formed, like the way we used, like this was started in 2020. So for example, at six o'clock, the utility can be the personnel or what at any, any given moment. Or, but we knew it a year in advance, that was our schedule. So Jordan doesn't have to put out a schedule. Now, we can still call a meeting outside of that. That's not a problem. But I always like that. Does anybody have any concern, like any questions? I tried to speculate around as much as I could to. Yeah, you'll be, there's your opportunity to chair a few meetings. Yeah. Well, okay, if nobody else has any questions, call for the question. All in favor? Yeah, carry it. Good. I just give them a bit of a brief. I got a phone call last week from the salesman from CAP. Called me, first time I ever talked to him. I forget his name. I think he took over from Bob. And he made me aware that, we were made aware prior that our warranty is coming to an end on the existing graders. So at the end of the day, our warranty could be gone. So all he wanted was all like a commitment, we can purchase them this year, but while they wouldn't be available, like a commitment that we would purchase them and they would honor that warranty. That's the way he explained it to me. Is that what you got, Jordan, from?
Well, all capital equipment takes six months to a year or longer to actually construct.
Right, no.
But because our warranty period is concluding, yeah, we either need to commit to the purchase of a new one or our extended warranty just concludes.
Okay, but so this would be the two thousand, out of the two thousand twenty four budget though.
Yeah, oh, yeah. If they wouldn't be requiring the purchase price upfront, you guys would still need to decide where the funds are coming from. Like, you have money in your equipment reserve, but there's always the option of other things as well.
Do we know what the hours are on that unit? I did talk to another municipality, how they work, like better understanding. And they seem, that gentleman is very knowledgeable. He's on the committee there. And at five thousand hours, that's when they say is the tipping point. I have no idea how many hours we have. I think it would five years, but.
Now, that question would be better suited to Shane at a transportation.
Yeah, I think, well, we're pushing six years now, but I know.
Five years in the books.
Wayne's grader is quite a bit less hours than than Alan's grader. Just because of, I think it was Pete, maybe he wasn't out as often as, you know, maybe doing bookwork and whatnot, but the six-wheel drive had more hours on than the four-wheel drive.
They're at the point where they should be rolling over. And I mean, they're not at the point where they're whole shape, which is where they get a nice resale value right now. Whereas if we wait longer, it just gets worse and worse.
That's what he was explaining. So now, right now, we've got one, one sixty and one one forty. What are we purchasing here? Identical what we got or are we doing with six-wheel drive? Like, what I'm, from what I'm hearing, the six-wheel drive takes quite a bit of fuel. I'm just wanting.
Well, one is an all-wheel drive, one isn't. And that's what we currently have, is we have one that's an all-wheel drive.
But is that what we're purchasing here is identical replacement to what we got, meaning a four-wheel and a six-wheel? It doesn't say it in here, so I just wanted to make sure we're we're clear when you.
Well, it's a one fifty model, yeah. One all-wheel drive, one fifty model, one.
Should we put that in there so it's clear? And what is the difference in dollar value? I don't, I haven't seen it pulled yet. This is just a commitment. We're not really. But that's all.
This is, this is committing.
Yeah.
To purchase.
Yes.
Is where we can massage.
Okay. We got the dollar value. No, I'm okay with it. It's just that warranty is something that's a concern if that's your reason I ask the CEO to put it on here. So.
Well, if you don't have warranty, you need a bowl of transmission or a bowl of mortar, you're up to that hundred gram.
With the quotes.
And.
The quotes on them.
What's that?
The quotes on there.
Yeah, the quotes on there, but what are we getting with it?
We would be getting.
Like, do we get to one forty, one fifty?
One fifty, all-wheel drive and one fifty.
Not here. Not on the motion.
No. What do you want?
Well, yeah, it has to be clarified in the motion.
Yeah, they don't call them one forties anymore.
Yeah, whatever is there. As long as we're, we know what we're purchasing it. It sounded like all he wanted was a motion and even a dollar value that we're committing to, committing that purchase.
Go me a reference specific.
I, well, let's look at the quote. Let's look at the quote and why don't we look at the quote and add that in there? Right?
Is there a quote number?
Yeah, there's a quote number on that.
Hmm, no, there's not a quote number because his is just his standard grader pricing for twenty twenty four.
Oh, I see. Well, you've got a one forty M. Could you reference that and a? No, one fifty.
The one fifty A W D. One fifty. Everything that's ever rated is our, is our existing.
Our existing, yeah.
So they're both one fifties we're getting?
Right.
One by dollar. Okay. All wheel drive. So it is about a thirty nine, now, almost forty thousand dollar difference, right? Four-wheel drive.
Sixty.
Sixty thousand, yeah. Yeah.
I think there was only like thirty five difference when we bought.
Things are going up anyway. So the trade-in value is the same?
Because one has less hours.
One has less hours.
So the two-wheel drive.
Plus less hours.
Okay, so the hours is driving more. Now, I don't see the breakdown on the five-year seventy-five. What is the cost of that?
What do you mean the break?
Or the, the extra warranty is not in here, right? Remember, we got a, remember Bob in the first meeting? The extra warranty.
Or it's a.
It's a service warranty.
It's been ser- ser- service agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on the five-year down there.
Well, seven thousand five hundred.
Seven five hundred.
Premium warranty.
On the last line.
Last.
Full service package.
Full service package as well.
What's the cost of that?
We mean, it's just all.
Isn't it all, it's all included in it.
It's all together.
Why didn't, remember that meeting? Well, what was that about? Like he says, you got, he voted against it. I mean, and Red Jack was at his first meeting. This thing came up. He says he's going to vote against it because he doesn't believe in buying warranty and that's why it must be included here.
This is different. All all they're saying there with the seventy-five hundred hours is that they're going to extend the warranty until we get a new ones. But we pay them monthly fee to CAT, to service or.
Yeah, you see that in every accounts payable run to Tarmont.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairperson, like, is there a motion on the floor at the moment? One, no, because. Then hopefully, well, we need background information that we should have discussed that committee, but we ran out of time if we want to make a decision tonight. No, you're right, but shouldn't we make a motion and then and then massage it? Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, go ahead then if somebody wants to.
Just refresh your page, just to make sure.
I was going to.
I was just trying.
Whereas the real municipality of Cornwallis utilized the services of canoe procurement of Canada for price quotes on two new motor graders. Therefore, be it resolved that the council will be, real municipality of Cornwallis accept a price quote prepared by Tarmont CAT with one million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand with trade-in value of five hundred and thirty thousand for a net cost of six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars plus all applicable taxes for the purchase of two motor graders, a one fifty model and a one fifty A W V model.
So, Mr. Rowan, I'll be up in a second. So now, should we, just, that's what I wanted to discuss. Should we add that, that should come out of the two thousand and twenty-four budget, capital budget? It looks like we're, we spent, there's no date on here, but that's what I was wanting. That's why he phoned me.
When's the delivery expectation on?
Six months. Well, he said.
Springtime.
Spring. That's what he told me. I just, and I reached out to another municipality, did the same thing, and they didn't put in costs in there. All they did was make a motion, the way you explained it to me, is that they're committing to buy the CAT graders a year of, no, and then you start negotiating, but actually the costs are already here, so we're one step ahead.
Refresh your screen and you have done that.
Change, is everybody comfortable with that or should we add, just for the public, that?
Sure, it's already on there.
Okay, yeah, I tried.
It's all expenses borne by the twenty twenty four capital budget.
That's your amendment for it. Okay, yeah, now we got it. Okay, no, I'm okay with that. If you guys want a friendly amendment, if you're here, yeah. Yeah, so you're okay with that friendly amendment there?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so you're okay? Then we're good to go. Any other questions, folks? No? All in favor? Carrie, okay, folks? So, so our warranty just got extended?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Just don't forget to let them know.
Do it tonight before I load again.
Don't try and explode.
All right.
That's a good one. Yeah.
Let's push those old pairs back on.
Is there anything to do with a motion on the next one there?
Well, yeah, I didn't know what you wanted. You just indicated you want a cheater LPS on the agenda, so.
We heard it from the engineer here tonight. There seems to be a lot of excitement, confusion and all that. And we called it community meeting because people wanted answers out there. They wanted to know, when can they call a plumber to go put their hose into the collar of their tank? And they weren't getting any answers, so we called a community meeting. Dan came out there and explained to them, you know, that they can do it. And we heard it tonight. So the next day I came to the office, two days later, and I seen a permit that was five pages long, but that had me totally confused. And at the project meeting, when Gerald was here from Manitoba Water Service, War Ryan and Castle, they wanted this information, starting to go out in May, to tell people about the excavation and where the project is. That information really never got out there. And I took a point myself that whatever water service, Warren Ryan shared with the office, just to make photocopies and call a meeting and give it to them. And now one of the plumbers is getting pretty busy. He wanted to come out there in early August, but the people didn't have any information. Lockhart was ready to come out there. Terry Nasser had him booked, but he stepped back and now the information that's available out there now looks like he's going to be really busy. So I wanted to bring counsel up to speed and questions that came up at the community meeting was the cost of the pump. The pumps are already included in the project, but we have to provide them. So I called up the, where they came from, Emco, got the prices for them to Jordan, a check valve and all that, all the parts that will be required once the homeowner hires his contractor to hook the hose or the pipe up to the collar. And I recommended to Jordan and to Sabrina the other day, who are KPD, that it would be nice to have all the parts identical, so it doesn't matter which plumber you hire, that valve and the check valve, all that is the same. The utility operator, no doubt, will keep a spare pump out there, so Jordan doesn't get called at midnight. If a pump fails, he could hand him a check valve and a, and a ball valve. But in talking to Sabrina, she says, I'll dispatch call for equal to, well, middle of the winter, you want to make sure everything fits the same. And I got the quotes and I forwarded to Jordan, so. I'm just wondering how how council feels and how the CEO, CEO feels to, not to force everybody, but basically get the same supplies that were installed out there. At the end of the day, there's a couple of ways you could do it, do it. The municipality could buy the fittings, so on the, when the pump gets issued, that valve and that check valve gets reimbursed by, by the people at that cost. That way you're guaranteed when that pump gets issued, the same ball valve and the same check valve gets into every tank. So they're, they're, the engineers wanted to make sure that while the pumps can't be interchanged, engineer thought it was a good idea to have everything equal. So that way, because thing, every tank is different, but once those parts go in and they come out, they don't have to retrofit anything to make everything identical. So I'm just wondering how council feels. I sent a quote to Jordan. What was the total, about twelve thousand bucks? And that money would come back, like everybody buying a check valve and a ball valve, the municipality would get the money back. And they're ready to go out there. Fittings.
So are you looking for a resolution then that is going to suggest that the municipality purchase these parts with the expectation is that residents come and purchase those parts from the municipality?
Yes, yeah, but I, that way you're guaranteed they'll, the ball valves and the check valves will be identical.
So what happened last council meeting was council passed a resolution for Keystone Funding District to administer the the pump and permitting process.
Yeah.
Because we need a permit, so land titles and assessment are aware that these improvements have occurred. And then it was to alleviate the weight off of the administration of the office with it being tax season. So the Reeve has a supply part list. He wants the municipality to buy them all, but he's, it could be all put through the ma- the actual capital project, where fifty percent of it would be covered under the grant and fifty percent would be born into the total amount that we need to determine the borrowed and the one-time buy-in and things like that. It's just, we're kind of not on the same highway even right now.
No, Manitoba Water Service Board said their funding stops at the hose. The hose is sitting.
There's an email in your attachment from August thirty first. This is, hi, Jordan, we are good to cost share the purchase, only if materials you are quoted, you would have to buy them and then send the paid invoice to us for cost share. But that's in your.
Also, you can do that.
So we can discuss this and I'll make a resolution that the municipality of Cornwallis does hereby authorize administration to open and purchase those parts for the residents of Cheater to buy back from the municipality for the installation of their.
Well, I don't want them to buy it back. I want to put it into the capital project. So then it just, so we don't have somebody coming in saying, okay, I want this pump. And then they kind of get their pump, but then they're like, okay, well, I got to pay you, you know, one hundred thirty-seven sixty-five for the parts. Put it all into the big, big pot, and then once the project is done, we divide it by the number of connections and then just disperse. and then just disperse evenly.
Okay, can we get that worded then?
I was just trying to fast-track it here.
So, we're just gonna, we're gonna buy it out of, the project will pay for it. Water service.
Water service. So, you tell them you're ready to draw it.
But even the quote you got, you've got 55, but I'm pretty sure 55 isn't the actual number, is it?
For the, well, 55, I don't have, I didn't go around counting houses. Your water users would, your, your utility account minus one. Like I told you, minus one, which is a matter of, they don't need one. Whatever accounts you have, you need one for every home. Because it's gonna be the same block valve and the same check valve.
Yes, you don't know that number then.
Well, no, but.
Yeah.
Well, do you need that number? Why don't?
That could be big. Yeah, they'll leave that part there.
It'll be the same as the pumps, I imagine, like I told you.
Well, we had issues with the pumps because there wasn't all of them purchased for the subdivision.
That's right. You don't need to pre-buy for homes that aren't built yet. They will be, we'll have to put that in the bylaw once the bylaw is established. So, I think my understanding is there's two spare pumps.
So, then you're doing it away, right? So, the engineer told you guys that it's on the RM to ensure adequate connection so anybody can come get pumps. Not plumbers. Anybody can do it. Your only can, your only revision or review of what's going on is you expect build wire to inspect it while it's open and then to open the curb stop. Right?
Over the curb stop.
So, then you're kind of doing away with the permit.
Well, no, the permit is to have that pump issued so you know Joe Smith picked up a pump. I mean, there's no Joe Smith, but you know what I'm saying? So, he has to sign out or tick the box that, that, for that role.
No, I haven't really understood what you've been saying on this whole capital project all along. And that's why there's the communication gap. So, we want to make sure we get this. I, I wrote up the draft resolution for the connecting parts. Now, we need to know about moving forward.
Well, right now, the residents out there and the engineer giving us the go-ahead.
Yeah.
To hook up the hose, to hire their contractor to the column of the tank. There's only one fitting that's required. And there's only one fitting that'll work. And that's the, for that high-density polyline. So, that's the only thing that can happen right now. That plumbing permit is when you get the green light from Manitoba Water Services Board, that the system is commissioned, meaning the leak station in a month or two months. That's when that plumbing permit that we approved at the last meeting, that's when that permit comes in effect. That permit will identify that homeowner has taken a pump out. Either it's plumber or the individual.
Okay, so now you're having the RM buy 55 of these parts. So, it's gonna have to be on us to individually pack each item and ensure they go out when the pump goes out.
For each pump, for each pump, there will be a check valve and a block valve issue. So, it works, like you purchase them and you issue it with the pump.
Yeah, the check valve, the ball valve, the insert, the adapter.
The insert, actually, that should be up to their con, like, contractor needs that now. Can't do that with the pump. The insert is that special connection for that high-density poly pipe.
You tell me how you want your resolution. The way I have it set up is to buy these four items. The adapter, the insert, the ball valve, the check valve, put them all through the grant program, pile them up, individually bag them. So, when somebody comes in to collect their pump, they get a bag that has the adapter, the insert, the ball valve and the check valve.
No, at the information meeting, a question was raised by a resident, how much are the parts? I went out the next morning, found out where the parts were purchased from. That was from Emco, and they quoted me all the parts. Okay, yeah, that's the quote I said. So, right now, when the homeowner, municipality's gonna say so or not, there are no jurisdiction. When they hired a contractor, that insert will have to be purchased by the homeowner or brought by the contractor. When the pump gets issued, only the check valve and the ball valve is required. So, they're all identical.
So, then we're not gonna include the adapter and insert as part of the?
No, the adapter and the insert.
Purchase and 50% funding again?
Yeah, it's. It's too late to be doing that. People want to start hooking up. So, you've got two pieces.
So, they'll pay.
You tell me.
They'll pay full price to go there.
Yeah, yeah, their plumber will get it. Identity ball. She hear that?
It's as clear as the air outside, but it's smoky, by the way.
It's the insert and the adapter.
To that beginning?
No.
No.
The ball valve and the check valve.
That goes in the tank with the pump. That goes in the tank with the pump, with the.
First two items have to be done to connect the hose to the top of the tank.
But that's on each individual.
Have to deal with that, they're stuck with that.
Yeah, they're gonna deal with that with their contractor. It's a special fitting. And the reason you don't want 55 of those is, at the meeting, concrete tanks might not need that fitting. They'll just put it inside the tank because it's too thick to, for that. That'll be up to the contractor. Might want to put an ID on there or a union, that's up to them. There's quite a few concrete tanks out there.
Be resolved that the arm of Cornwallis authorize a purchase of the ball valve and the check valve parts as quoted by Emco Waterworks for the Chater Low Pressure System Capital Project. And the invoices be paid and forwarded to the Manitoba Water Services Board for inclusion in the grant-funded projects.
Got a mover?
All set for the motion.
Counselor wrong? Okay. Discussion?
Not anymore, no.
Was that?
I think we need to be more.
All in favor?
Okay. Be resolved that counsel of the arm of Cornwallis does hereby allow the existing agreement with 6864598, Manitoba Limited to be amended so the burn can be built in two phases. Phase one, existing. Phase two will be built outside of the agreed-upon time of October 31st.
You have a second? Counselor Maxwell? Okay, we've got a move, this time.
So, what this is about is the Transcannon Industrial Park. The resident has a fence in the way. In order for the developer to be free and clear of the development agreements and get their clearance certificates, the burn will need to be extended further south. The fence is in the way. We have all the met with the contractor, the developer and the resident. He will move his fence. And then the developer will come back and finish the burn once the fence is moved. But it'll be after that October 31st deadline.
When's the approach go in?
Uh, the approach, he's marked it two days ago, three days ago. Uh, the.
It'll be done in, in the first phase.
Oh, yeah, it'll be done right away. The, the culvert was dropped off yesterday afternoon. And the developer contractor was made aware of where they are to cut. They're gonna do that and put the, they're gonna lay the culvert in place. And the resident is going to work at building the approach himself. He's been made aware of that as well.
Anybody have any questions? All in favor? Carry.
Be resolved that counsel of the arm of Cornwallis hereby authorize Reeve Poulter's attendance at the Western Caucus Meeting held in Hartley, Manitoba on Friday, September 15th, 2023, uh, at the registration expense of $20.
I have a second.
Counselor.
Counselor Maxwell? You got any, any add there?
I wish I could attend myself if somebody else wants to go. Uh, I'll make an amendment. And they're, they're very, pretty valuable, all the sessions, because we're networking with other municipalities in the West, but.
It, we were, Deputy Reeve Ross and myself went to one in March, February, March in Delaware, it was really good. But I always thought that, that when they advertise it was for the Reeve and the deputy Reeve. But I'm gonna get clarification next time, open it up. I mean, you, anybody that wants to go was really, I thought, thought it was very informative. Okay, anybody got any questions? All in favor? Carry. I'll have a motion to go in.
Be resolved, according to Municipal Act, Section 152.3, Subera B, Paragraph 3, counsel does hereby close the meeting to the public and move in camera at 7:43pm.
You have a second, Counselor. Any questions? All in favor? Carry.
Good night.
Yep, good night.
The last term.